Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this order, this meeting to order. Special meeting to discuss outside contract labor, Jay. It's finance.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, you guys, I'm just here.
All right, so at one point, we discussed whether or not we would put together, compile a list of vendors. Do we still want to do that? Is it necessary? Is it? If it is, then what's our parameters? What did you have in mind?
Well, I think our original discussion that included Mayor and everybody was when we had a water leak.
For example?
For example, we could contact a plumber, okay? What plumber do we contact? How do we know? And then it was said, I believe Greta said, why don't we find out how much their hourly rate is? And we could have it on file. And then if something comes up, we could call down the list.
Yeah, but that's for that stuff. But then you guys are also-
That's emergency stuff.
That's emergency.
That's all I thought we were talking about.
No, you guys were talking about hauling rock and electrical and heating. You guys discussed that, too.
Well, anything.
That we need to get bids from all of them, is what you had said. Not really bids, but-
No, it wasn't bids.
It's not a bid, it's just, this is-
You requested their rates.
It's our rates.
Information, correct. And there's nothing wrong with doing that, that I am aware of.
How would we choose? I mean, are we going to do a 50-mile radius, 25-mile radius? Are we going to look and find out who and or what?
You just post it out there, and whoever wants to-
Just put it in the paper.
-to work for the City of Witten, is the way I understand it.
Okay, so how would we-
They then submit their information.
Okay, so I think the issue got to be the wording.
Yeah, it's the wording. How was it worded?
They'd have to look back, I don't remember.
Because I think the-
I sent it to Greta. Who was that, Greta?
Was it a text or an email?
I just text her.
Wasn't that end of the year?
Beginning of the year. I don't think I sent it to you, Jay. I think I was just between me and Greta.
I don't see anything, so.
You know, for example, you have more than one tree trimmer in town. Do you want to, you know, like, switch off between one or the other? That kind of stuff.
Is, what is this list, credit, you know?
It's all of our vendors that we have, that are currently go, that we use currently.
We currently use, okay.
But this isn't contract labor list. I mean, well, I guess it could be patenting associates, I guess that's a contract within.
Yeah, because then, I mean, we, it's not really that we do, actually, we have, I think, like, encode the contractors that we use.
Well, I would say whoever is, of course, this is a list that we already have.
So we probably have their rates.
I would, I would hope that we will use local people first.
Well, I don't think anybody doubts that, but-
Right, no, my point is, then who, if they're not available, then who do you go to? That's, that's the point of this list.
That's where it started.
Yeah.
That's where it started.
Because I think for those that have to look them up, meaning Angel, she would like, I would think she would want a list, instead of having, now, now who do we go to?
Right, and I think that's where, I think that's where this board is supposed to help compile this list.
But see, if you put an ad in the paper, I mean, how would, how do you, you can't say something like-
Well, they didn't necessarily say you put an ad in the paper. You basically say in your meeting that you were, you're taking, you're compiling a list of people who would like to work for the City of Witten. And then if an issue comes up that, in their line of work-
Okay.
Then their name would be on the list.
Let me see this. So we're not, yeah, we're not putting together a list tonight, because we don't know who the list is.
Well, to me, I mean, we've been using the same people forever, unless you think they're really sticking it to you.
No, that's not-
No, that's not what this is about. This is about if that person can't come, who do we call next?
And you're using, this is taxpayers' money. This is everybody in this room, plus you and me, and everybody else in this town. This is our money. It's not for me to say, I'm gonna solely use one person out there and not give somebody else a shot if they live within the City of Witten, or they live here, or they're local, and they're a business, because they're not getting a chance to do any work here either. Not that it's ever happened, that's not the point. But as a city, as using taxpayers' money, you should have some type of organization of how you're going to do that, and that we never have. You know, I don't, there's not one person on this list that I wouldn't hire again tomorrow. That's not the point. But if we don't have some type of a guideline to go off of, then we don't look like we are taking care of everybody who could do the work. You understand what I'm saying?
We don't have an ordinance, or not an ordinance, but a, a past practice.
Well, they're, no, no.
Are you aware of the past practice?
Well, it's just been basically using the same people that we've been using and not going, I mean, it's just using them. And then if we end up running into an issue to where one of the, the people that we normally use can't do it, then they usually recommend, okay, well, I, you know, and then we kind of go with that person, whoever they, hey, I can't, I'm not available, so, and they say, call this guy. And so then we call the whoever we use.
And that's how it's been?
And that's, yeah, that's pretty much how everybody's worked, and it's been to where that's kind of seems to have worked out okay.
So we've not-
We've never had an issue where something hasn't been fixed or anything, or-
Because of that.
Due to not having help. Most of the time, we end up having more help than we need, sometimes. Because once we put out that we need something, then-
Then this, maybe this, I would be comfortable with saying at the next meeting, which is a week from tonight, saying that, have the minutes be such that, when it hits the paper, if someone wants their name on a list-
And that's, that's how I texted it to Greta.
Just let, let-
That's exactly what I said to her.
Angel know, and we want, we would like to know your rates, and then it's up to them to let us know. Is that, is that fair?
It's just putting people on a list, doesn't mean you're gonna use them.
But what you find, when you're dealing with taxpayer money, if, you want to make sure that you're getting a fair price, if they're, if they're the only ones on the list, then that's the one you use.
Don't we also have to use prevailing wage, though? I mean, you have to make sure that your people are using prevailing wage, depending on your job.
Depends on the job, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Because we pass the prevailing wage every year.
Correct.
I can't either, and that's why I'm like, how was that working? Because I was just trying to see how it was working.
I would hope that we, of course, I guess, how do you know what jobs have prevailing wage and which ones aren't? Under 5,000? I think there's a threshold.
There it is, and it's in the-
Scott, do you know that answer?
What's that?
Prevailing wage. How do you know if something's prevailing wage or not? What's the difference? How do you know? Is there, is there a line?
Huh?
Is there a dollar amount?
I don't know, I thought anything that was done for a city was supposed to be-
I thought anything municipal or anything like that was living in public, I'd heard.
You know, the only number I know about is about bidding. You're allowed to do $20,000 with a person with no bidding.
And that's per job, too, correct?
Yes.
Not throughout the whole year, it's actually-
You can do it every week.
You can do it.
Yeah, okay, that's interesting.
Yeah. As long as you never pay one person over $20,000 at one time, you don't have to bid nothing. It used to be 10, and then they raised it to 20. And I mean, I got a lot of cities that I do that with now. I mean, I've done that in Oakdale Springs, they want me to do stuff for them. And they say, hey, we'll buy the material, we'll flip the job at hand, we'll do whatever we gotta do, wherever, you know, we don't have to-
Then where are you going, to put it out there, pay for bids or whatever?
But there is an ordinance that's supposed to be a procedure, open market, all work and purchases of supplies, materials, and services.
But like, some of them, the prevailing wage don't apply.
I don't know. But this is, like, if you think less than 10,000, you don't have to go to the newspaper without observing procedure prescribed in this section.
Let's fill out some order. If they're sold, that's just a supplier.
What's the detail on that? Because I think it's changed to 20.
This is just the original one.
Doesn't have to go to the paper, you say?
So, I don't know. If it's, well, this was the, this is the original code that the attorney sent. The revised code of ordinances with the City of Witten, and it says, open market procedure, all work and purchases of supplies, materials, and services of less than the estimated value of 10,000 shall be made open market without newspaper advertisement.
I don't see where we'd get out of prevailing wage.
Well, neither, I don't, I don't think that's the issue you're hearing.
Yeah, no, not with the guts of the issue.
I said it wrong. We were asking what was a prevailing wage.
The original, the original meeting, we were all sitting here, I think Tim Taylor had said something about, we usually take bids every year.
Yeah.
And Angel said, no, we don't. And he said, well, I thought we always did. So then I checked with Hillsborough and said, how do you guys do it? Well, they said, all they do is whatever I text Greta-
Yeah, I can't find that either.
And it just, they basically said during the meeting, anybody who would like to work for the City of, we could say City of Witten, could bring by their credentials or whatever. Example, if there's a third tree trimming service in town that we don't use, we don't know about them, or whatever, then they could bring their stuff here, and maybe next time we needed tree trimmed, we'd use them.
Okay.
I can, I can find out exactly what was written in.
Well, let's, let's get this on the agenda for Tuesday, or, yeah, next Tuesday. And do you know if, is the guy from the pic over here, do we have to know?
I hope so. He's supposed to, he's notified, he was notified last month, too, and he didn't show up.
Okay. Well, to get it in the paper, if anybody wants to be on the vendor list-
She's, and then she turns the minutes, too, and she gave, she mailed him a copy of the minutes.
Was that how that works? She doesn't write that up?
No, no, no.
Angel does?
She types up the minutes, and then if he doesn't show up, she forwards him a copy of it.
I didn't know how that worked.
And actually, he came in and listened to the tape, and then did his own thing, so.
I see that board.
Yes, he, that's what he does.
Okay. Well, anyway, we'll get it on the agenda for next Tuesday night, that if you want to do business with us as a vendor, get on the list. Please forward your information and rates, who to contact, and we'll get it on the, on the list. Then we won't, this is not something we're gonna put in the paper apart from that kind of thing, there's not gonna be a letter sent out, it'll just be, they happen to read the minutes, and they want on there.
That's right, and that's, that's all you have to do.
That's good.
Okay, so now all of them that's on this list is already on the list.
If we're doing business with them-
Yeah.
They're already there.
So it will just be new people.
So we're not taking, we're not seeking to replace them, is not what you're thinking.
No, 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 never were seeking to replace.
No, 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 it was never to replace anybody.
All right.
It was just to add to.
But that's not what-
No, it was, this is just to add to.
That's never what was said.
You said?
I've been here 38 years. Does Nocomas have a list? I mean, I'm not saying this is good or bad, I'm just saying, I don't know many other towns that has a list.
Apparently Hillsborough does it every year.
Do they?
Apparently they, because that's where I got the information from.
From Hillsborough.
And like I said, Tim, one of our meetings sat here and said, oh, well, every year we'll do, you know, like, schools do those milk bids and all that stuff. Every year, we'll kind of just do a, which we don't have anything to bid, but we'll do a list, and then, you know, because people move in and out of the town. And if there's somebody that moves into the town, that, I'm using tree trimming for the example, because that's something that we do a lot more of, and there's Hubbard, which he don't live here anymore, but there's Douglas, and if there's another person that lives here, that Hal Joyce, or Lee Joyce, whoever, if they, one of them trimmed the trees, how do we know as a City of Witten that they'd be interested in working for us if they don't submit their name and address?
And when do you get the, make sure they have insurance and stuff?
Absolutely, yeah.
And what we would ask for, in this particular case, is all the supporting documents, like you're asking, bonding, insurance, et cetera, for that. I don't know who all would need that, but I would certainly would think that tree trimmers would.
But there was no, there was no, I don't know how this, you know, I'm glad you're all here, I think that's great, but there was never any intent of not using anybody who we're already using. The intent was, as I said, we're using, this is taxpayers' money, you guys pay into this. If I started, if we started using, I can't think of anybody, somebody in another county for everything we do, then you guys would go, wait a minute, what about us?
Well, sometimes this, this popped up, too, with the county, because when the housing was rebuilt, not one person that did that contracting work was from this county.
Correct.
Did you? Sorry, buddy. Well, you, you tore the thing-
I know what you're saying, I know what you're saying.
I'm talking about rebuilding, the rebuilding part of it.
I worked in all three towns on that, but I know what you're saying.
Did you construct, I know that you tore it down, right?
Uh?
You tore it down, right?
Yeah.
Did you do any reconstruction?
We done all the dirt work, everything after this place was put up.
Okay, okay, sorry, I didn't realize that, that piece.
But I know what you're saying, dude.
But we were going by and seeing that the brick guy was from-
Yeah.
Who knows where, and the air conditioning guy was from, they're out of the county.
They follow me.
They do.
Yeah. It's pretty of what he's saying, he's kind of right, because I've worked for Windsor Homes all over the state for 15 years, 20 years, made a lot of money.
Beardstown, Taylorville.
They all have their own people, Casey's has her own people.
I mean, I have to work on it here, because it was here, but I would have done that for him if it had been in Springfield, or wherever, you know what I'm saying.
So they kind of did that like the City of Witten? We got our own people, and we usually just stay-
That's what they do, yeah. And the-
The only reason they open it for bid is because it's taxpayers' money, and they had to.
Well, I don't know that it did, and while they took, excuse me, they took-
If it was closed, we couldn't come to the meeting.
We-
We bid it a lot cheaper than the other guys, I know that.
Yeah, but how come if you bid it cheaper than you-
Because it don't matter what they bid, you can still take what you used to be.
They hired Windsor, you hired Windsor. Windsor then can pick who they want.
Yep.
Aaron McCarty can tell you, too.
Yep.
Well, it was the housing, it had nothing to do with the county, but it still was brought up, and that's the part that-
Yeah, they hired Windsor as the actual primary, and Windsor's able to hire any subcontractor they want to work under, anything.
Windsor's a general contractor, and they hire whoever the hell they want to hire, that's just how it works. It sucks that it is that way, it really does.
Well, it does, because it's just, you know, we try to keep as much in the county as we can, especially in this situation, we're trying to keep as much in town as we can.
Exactly. And like I said, this whole purpose was if there's somebody here in this town new, that we don't know of, that is gonna say, well, how come I never get a chance to do any work for the City of Witten?
We do know you're there, maybe for one.
Exactly, this way, they-
The other part, too, is the professional services that we, we get legal, as opposed to accounting, sometimes fresh eyes see things that the other ones didn't, which is different than labor. So that's one of the, that was brought up during this, this conversation, too, which I'm assuming you did get a bid, I'm assuming from KEB. So, yeah, this is, we'll just put it in the-
We didn't last, it'll be this week.
Well, have it, it'll be this week.
Oh, okay.
But we can just put this in, the minutes, and then if we garner any information, then fine, if not-
Well, you can, you can next, at our regular meeting, then-
Yeah, I'll bring it up, and I'll, I'll write out what I think is good.
We're gonna include this list, and then if anybody else out there, that's how you do it. And that, it's just a public-
And I think for you that are, like, Dave, you're on this list, so, I mean, you don't need to submit anything, and same thing with you, Chris, and Scotty, and other ones.
Well, if somebody's not here, and they happen to, it's no big deal.
And if you know somebody, say something to them, and they can get their information, because I know for the county, we have approved vendors list that they use, and that they go to first. So that's, that's why they have it. So, anyway, anyway, that's, that's all I had, or I thought we had.
That's the other thing about credentials, too. Bring, whenever you submit if you want to be a new vendor, then you need to have something about credentials, as far as insurance.
License.
License, whatever, you know, do you have to have a license, Chris, for what you do?
I got three of them. I know I liked you, I got four of them.
I'm just saying, I mean, that's something, too, they just want to put that in there, too, to make up the credentials.
One of you paid me. Well, I don't count my driver's license. Scott's gonna drive you around.
I mean, obviously, everybody that's on that list, they'll need to worry about it, because they're-
That's an ordinance. That's an ordinance, they have to hire, they have to have-
Submit all their documents before we even hire them.
Right.
I mean, we-
Think our insurance-
Our insurance would kill us.
EBA license, State Illinois license, make certified gas with Amber.
And see if they've already worked for us, she already had that.
Well, it ain't a different thing, like, we got Jason Chinowitz, I mean, he's doing the roof, and Angel made sure that whenever we said yeah to his bid, then Angel said, okay, bring me in here, and he, she got, she got all the documents together, and has a folder on him now, so that we know he did work for us, and we have everything, in case anybody comes in. Not yet, it's supposed to be starting here, the end of this month. Yeah, he was kind of, but he did put some stuff around that week, so that if he came over and didn't do that, just to kind of hold that back a little bit. Is that all?
I originally thought we were meeting over the treasures report. I didn't know.
Well, bring that, well, we can, now, it was this.
Well, that's all that was said.
That's all that was said, because that's all he, yeah, he didn't say anything about the, he didn't say anything about the-
Is that what it said?
Yeah, the contract, yeah.
Is that what it said in the paper?
For contract labor, because I-
We can talk about it, we just can't make any decisions.
No, well, we just, I mean, no, I just, we just need to make sure, now, there's two fire department listings on that treasures report, because one will be for their money, and then the second one has to be for that ordinance says special-
Has to be a separate line, just like, just like we broke out.
It is a separate line item, so that they know how much is their playing, for spending money for stuff, and how much is coming in for their, you know.
How was that, how was that?
See, yeah, see, she's got the fire department right here, so then, yeah, she's got a fire department in there now, she just, we need to make sure that, yeah, and Angel tags it as it comes in, that's what it's doing, because that's-
No, but you need another line?
We don't need another line, right? We've already got the fire department on there, so-
There needs to be a separate one now.
Why?
Because this here is just the money that comes in from tax money for their, for their spending. The other is the subscription money that's in somebody's pocket, because they have it in there, and now it's gonna come back here.
Right.
How does that keep separate, though? I mean, how, how, how do we know what comes out of it? We may know what goes in it, but-
That's just it, we're gonna have to print out every month, because I'm a little concerned about that. Because when she gets money in, let's say it's a $40 subscription from somebody-
She tags it in the system.
She's gonna have to tag it as a special whatever fund, so then when you go and bid into it, see the fire department, you're gonna see, I don't know, three funds, three accounts, two accounts.
Should be just two.
Two, one is for the tax-
The tab.
Tax, and one is for subscriptions.
One will be for subscriptions.
That's it.
Okay, but it all goes into the same, when something is paid-
Same, it still goes into the same.
When something is-
When something is paid, it has to come out of that subscription money first. I don't know what, I don't know, or, no, 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 I said that wrong. It has to come out of the-
Tax money first.
Tax money first. I don't know what the subscription money, how that's gonna work.
The other way, I was putting on, you posted a comment, I went to, and I seen that. I thought the subscription thing had to go in the top box.
It all goes into the same line.
It's still separate, it's still separate.
You have to track it separately.
What the deal is, is that if that, if that line for subscriptions said there was $2,000 in there, there better be $2,000 in that general fund to cover it.
Right.
And if you had to take it out, that's fund accounting, just more information you wanna know, but all your funds should add up to what's in there.
But they just-
But you understand my point is it's-
They wanna know every month-
Well, I get that, but-
How much is in this one, and how much is in this one.
But that's not, there's, there's really no way to know that, because you can, I can tell you how much comes in.
If you can't do that, we need to set up a separate account.
You don't come where not to work.
Separate checks.
It doesn't matter what checkbook you put into. If I put two, if I put two strings into one, and you're taking money out of this to pay, how do I know which one of these two came out?
It's by coded, she said it's coded in, Angel says you can code it in the quick-
The payments?
Payments, too.
Oh, okay, well, and if she's doing that, that's fine.
She can code it by the payment, too.
Okay, all right.
She said she can do that.
And the subscription money is a 12, then when she-
That's not what I mean. I'm just saying, again, you've got one stream of expenses coming in, and two streams of income.
Okay.
It's in the same pot. When I pay $10 out, do I take five from this one, and five from this one?
No.
Which one?
She codes it how it's coming out of that account. She can code it. There's a code in there.
Okay, so she has-
She can probably explain it to you better, I do know that.
Okay, that's fine.
And I did it whenever I was at one there, and I could, I did do it that way.
As long as I'm not doing it, so that's, that's fine.
I've been, I've been learning.
Sure, no, it's, you can do it.
Get yourself stirred up, just as quick as you can understand.
Well, that's why we got the auditor to look at stuff, though.
My wife uses it, my wife uses it at school.
Yeah, because that's the lady, it's the one, the worst one.
The lady that comes here?
She comes here, she works for-
Whitey?
White.
Yeah, well, she's-
She's the one that does all that stuff.
She does the quarterly reports, and it's Deb Forbes.
Yeah, and she does all that stuff, so, yeah.
And she, she is, if you ever need to know anything about QuickBooks, ask her, she is-
She's the queen of QuickBooks.
Yeah, and see, Becky uses it at school, so she works on it every day, and so she understands it here.
Yeah.
So if you, she should know, she would know.
Yeah, and Angel has a question, that's who she calls, and then she comes up here and does her little thing and...
So, there, there has to be two sets of, there's, there's two incomes, two expenditures, so you can keep track of it. And if she, and that does make sense, I agree with that, I, so there has to be that, otherwise it's, you won't know. So, I'll talk to Becky about...
Adding another line.
So when you get a printout, you should say this or this.
How do you want that to read, though? Do you want it to be, we can keep with fire department.
Fire department, and then put under, put, uh, subscription fee underneath it.
The ordinance gave it an...
It says special fire fund, it said.
Special fire fund.
Special fire fund.
We could say tax income.
Yeah, one can be tax, and one could be subscription. Subscription slash miscellaneous, because then, because sometimes it's the money that they get, like if they, like, if they go to Irving and they have to get a five hundred dollar, then that money would go in there too, so, right, so it'd be like...
Maybe tax fund and fire fund too.
Or I could just say other income.
Fire, yeah.
Other income, and that would be...
Yeah, yeah, tax and then other income.
Well, all I know is the ordinance had that special...
Instead of just a special account.
Special fire funds.
Special fire fund.
Instead of subscriptions?
Well, it just said special fire funds, it said. Whatever that was.
You know, my opinion is you can't give enough information, we've got it, we can get it out there, why not do it? I mean, it's silly, excuse me.
No, I didn't.
It's silly not to give it to them, it's easy, and it eliminates a lot of suspect.
Funds, funds collected and set forth in this special fire department fund, that's it.
Special fire department.
Fund, so just label it that, we got the fire department, then special.
And they'll, they'll just understand that one is taxes and everything else is this one?
Subscription, yes, that's it, a subscription or other income that comes in.
Is it a subscription or is it tax?
You understand what we're doing.
I'm gathering, you know, as we go along.
But because the fire department is, they're a separate entity, but yet they're not, they have to come under the municipality. Because they come under the municipality, well, they are, but they...
They are, but they aren't.
Yeah, they're...
They all under us, but they do their...
Legally and technically, they're not, they have to run their money through the city. But we don't tell them how to spend their money, like, for instance, if they need to go get something, go get it, because they know how much money they've got. Now, if they're doing a grant, they still have to get their grant, they still have to raise their matching funds, all that stuff, but that comes in here.
Yes, anything that comes out of this account.
Check is issued from this office.
And then they have their own account that they do, that they get to hold any fundraiser money, and then they can spend that however they want, that's their fundraiser, so whenever they do...
Well, for grant matching typically...
Grant matching, what the venue's in it for, you know, they'll file for a grant, which is great, that's why they've got such great equipment down there, but they have to pay twenty percent.
Or whatever the percentage is.
Seventy, thirty percent.
As they got the money to do it, that's their...
Yeah, and they usually know, they know exactly how much money is coming and going.
We don't do anything with the grant, that grant money, or, excuse me, the, what they raise on their own. We only deal with subscriptions and the tax part, because we get...
And whatever's collected from fire calls.
The, we get, what, thirty-some hundred dollars for, from taxes for the fire department, it's really not. And then they have, if there's a fire call, they get money from subscriptions, they bill the rural people, otherwise, our city, they don't, do they bill us?
No.
For a subscription, they don't.
Nope.
So, anyway.
Well, we're free.
This has to be recorded separately, or should be, so that they can see what they've got, because otherwise, nobody knows.
See, it's gonna be sent, turned in a bill, if you didn't already, for like stamps and stuff to go off in, and he was asking me, he goes, "Does that come out of the money?" I said, "Well, I personally don't think it should, because they're part of the city."
Well, then we probably need to set an anonymized list.
Because the reason I say that is...
I know, but...
No, I'm just saying, we're...
He was sending out the bills instead of the fire department.
Yeah, but they've always, yeah, but it came out of the money, I mean, it can come out of their fire department fund money.
So the question...
Their tax dollar money, or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, see ya.
This is script, you know, I thought about this too, that's a scriptal thing, was that a fire department thing or was that a city thing? Who came up here?
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
Bye.
Yes, Gary.
Is this outside contractor thing table till it's paid in then?
Yeah, that's, yeah, we're pretty well done with that, we moved on, sorry, we did, I mean, we're not gonna do it...
Just wanna take care of our boys.
They're gonna keep going with the people that we have and just take, you know, if anybody else wants to put their hat in the ring, then they can, or...
I think they're going out of proportion, because...
Better if it's good to come up to the meeting and find out if Becky...
Absolutely, you're allowed to.
All right, then, I'd be right here.
See ya.
Nice to live here.
See ya.
Gary lives beside Kenny. Thanks, guys.
Take your labor.
Hey, see you later.
See you, guys.
Have a good day.
Me neither.
Thank you, you're running.
I don't know, they work out the...
Who?
He's retired.
He's retiring.
Prevailing wage. Trying to understand this a little bit, if you got folks on the list...
I guess he wrote it in the paper, I don't know.
They don't have to bid on jobs, I mean, as a city, we're not trying to get the lowest rate possible for a job that we want done. It doesn't work like that?
It doesn't, it does, from the standpoint that when, say, for instance, he puts in a bid for a project, and you put in a bid for a project, we take the lowest bid, but they are required to bid that based on prevailing wage.
All right, but we still are looking for the lowest...
Project bid, but we can't tell them, the only thing we can tell them that they have to bid is prevailing wage. And the prevailing wage is set by the state.
State, state and federal.
The state comes down with what they, what the, there's a list, if you'd like to see it, it's...
It's crazy, you can find that line, it's out there.
It is nuts, but...
Stand down a little bit.
Yeah, it tells you rate by hour and everything, it tells you...
So if you're doing a plumbing business, a plumbing project, you have to bid that at what a plumber would make out of the union hall, basically.
But I want you to know something, when they did that big culvert out there by Arley Breezy's, you know, that curve, they redid that whole culvert out there, and Gary and Roger Dornell worked for the township, and they did all that, they still got, only got paid ten dollars an hour.
Well, see, though, the township and the city is, yeah, see, that's why, like, whenever I was trying to get, like, if we have an emergency, where we could have Scott or like John Penary or somebody like that in our home to dig, like, because we need a third person, if they're a city employee, don't have to pay them prevailing wage, that's a loop, that's a way around it. Rather than paying, like, when we dug this up up here in that burr-ass cold weather, rather than, it was cold.
I know it, I know it was, I just hadn't heard that term before.
We could have had Scott or John paying them, yeah, it's gonna be more than our normal city guys make an hour, but let's say we pay them thirty dollars an hour, they're running our piece of equipment, rather than paying a hundred or a hundred and twenty dollars an hour for his backhoe here.
That's, but, but why didn't you bring that up a few minutes ago? Because that's what, that's part of...
That's exactly what we're looking for.
That's part of what we're talking about, you know, for this, for having somebody...
Who is that third person?
That's what this list is for, that type of thing, you know, but you and I talked about using our own backhoe instead of Scotty's backhoe, because that bill was, that's why that bill you said was so high, because we basically paid Scotty to use his own backhoe, instead of paying Scotty to work for us and using our backhoe.
Right.
Does our insurance cover that?
If he's a city employee, like a pro bono or...
A contracted or a...
No, not, not a contracted, no, he would be just like...
PRN, he's a PRN employee, he'd be a PRN employee.
Just like, for like...
Do we have to pay the prevailing, have to pay him the prevailing wage?
No, not if he's a city employee, we pay him like, he'd be like Walter, except we only use him just when we need him, on emergencies or situations like that.
Well, if I'm a Scotty, why would I wanna come to work for you as PRN instead of being, getting paid my prevailing wage with my backhoe rate?
Because he said that he, he's willing to do that, same with Johnny Penary, both of them would, I mean...
Well, Penary hasn't agreed to it yet.
Well, but these people out that are living in town are happy to, like, if Gary knew how to draw, I'm sure Gary would say, "Don't pay me prevailing wage," you know, if somebody, you know...
Gary hauled stuff down here and helped out that day too, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I get your point, but at the same time, we're saying that these guys are willing to not do that.
Charge us an arm and a leg.
And that's fine, what if Joe Smith just moves in right over there, and he just retired from the Labor Hall, and he wants to do that too? That's where this...
They can't legally do that.
Well, that's...
Why not?
If you're, if you're a retired operating engineer...
Okay, well, I used a bad example.
No, I'm just saying, if you're, if you're a retired union, if you're a retired union, just like John Penary was retired union, and they found out he come to work for the city of Witten, he ran a backhoe, there'd be some serious consequences on this part, I think, yeah.
They can still do X number hours a year.
I didn't think it was like, well, I've, I've heard it both ways, I mean...
Well, anyway, this, does that answer your question about the fire department?
The sole purpose, I thought, when we originally, Greta originally brought this whole thing up.
It's convoluted.
No, I think, I thought that this here, this here come about the night you and Angel had the heated conversation right here, whenever you guys were...
State law.
Are we gonna have, we want vendors, and you're wanting to pick and choose, and she says, "No, we gotta do all the vendors, we can't just pick and choose."
I don't think we're saying pick and choose.
Pick and choose what?
She said you can't pick and choose.
That was what's her...
You'd have to have every vendor on that list, you'd have to have them come, you'd have to have a price for each and every one of the city vendors.
Yeah, yeah, if we, if we say we want it.
When Greta and I originally started talking about this, we were talking about plumbers, I think it started out plumbers.
Plumbers, different, yeah.
Different plumbers, because if we had, I don't remember what it was, when Sean quit, and then if we had a water leak, or we've got these hydrants that have never been fixed, and we wanted to maybe get a, get a plumber to come in here, and, you know, how much would he charge if we had an emergency, and Stefan's off sick and we need somebody to come do something? That's what started the conversation, we thought, why can't we get an hourly rate from McCarty, Bondurant, or whoever else, and just have it on file, so that we, okay, we all agree, we'll use all three of these guys, they're all twenty-five dollars apart in rate, and go down the list, we'll use Bondurant this time, we'll use McCarty next time, or whatever, but we said, we have nothing right now. Right now, all we have is Angel, or somebody, calling somebody up, and then Bob's gonna say, "Why hate that son of a bitch, why in the hell'd you use him?" You know what I'm saying?
Well, but, but see, but what we were trying to get away from was wasting the time at the, at the emergency, having to call all these people, because we have, that was the point.
And that was what we're at, see, if we have listed, this one could be here in two days or twenty-four hours.
And it kinda grew to...
Contract labor. I don't know what heated discussion I got into, the one heated discussion was when she sat there and kept saying Scotty is an employee of the city. Scotty is not an employee of the city. You don't wanna say he's an employee of the city, because then your insurance company's gonna say, "How much does he get paid?" Where's your line here?
The heated discussion was the night that you kept, you guys were going back and forth on, you were wanting like bids on the rock, and the bids on this, and she's like, "You gotta get it all, you can't just pick and choose which one you're gonna get bids on." That's when you guys' heated discussion.
I thought it was about the hauler, is, aren't there other haulers?
Yeah, I was gonna say the rocks.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that was, that's what he's trying to say, it was about hauling rock and everything else, and so to get bids from other people, and it's like, well, if you're gonna get bids from him, you gotta get, she would, we have to get it from everybody.
We're not asking for bids, we're asking for rates, there's a totally diff, I mean, it's a big difference, because bids are based on project, rates are based on an hourly wage typically, or, you know, you have a...
And Scotty's not the only hauler in town, now, do I have a problem hiring Scotty for every piece of rock we haul? Not a lick. But does Kenny, who maybe has a problem with Scotty Lynch, that's my taxpayers' money too, why are you not checking her?
Especially if he's a hauler.
I don't have a problem with Scotty Lynch.
I'm just saying, when you're dealing with taxpayers' money, you gotta cover all your bases.
Well, you're dealing, the problem with it is, is that it appears that we have a problem with somebody by asking the question, we don't. But I would like to be able to say to our constituents, we've done our diligence by saying we've combed in...
That's all I want to do.
They've told us that they're willing to do this, we've gotten rates, I don't know what more we can do.
That's all we have to do, we did our diligence.
And if we were living in Springfield, we'd have a boatload of...
Well, that's because there is more vendors and things within there that you really have to do.
But it does bother me, you know, we've got Chris here who is really good at geothermal, and we get somebody, I know that those people come through...
But that's, that's beyond your control.
I know what he is, I know what he is.
It was very upsetting whenever that took, whenever that came into town, and I was pretty upset with that whole thing of...
With Dakota Access Pipeline, they did the same thing, they were...
You know, why even ask for outside bids if you're not even gonna look at them, because they didn't, I mean, they asked for them, because I know, and I...
On that bid, didn't put in any of his zero labor, just the materials, it's still gotta be, yeah, because he's like, "I'm gonna prove a point", didn't put in any of the, any of the labor, just had the materials, and got beat, and they said, "Well, how'd he, how'd he beat me?" Well, we don't show that.
Every building, Milton Litchfield's been about the same way, I remember when he built the road.
When they came in with the Dakota Access Pipeline, they had their own diggers, their own, no, they weren't gonna haul, buy pipe here, they were buying pipe for the whole project, well, I can understand that, so the only thing they would buy from us locally would be rock, whatever lumber they might have needed, Petro, if they needed that and it wasn't already contracted. It's like, you know, how, the only thing that happened, I bet that was really good, was over there where Capco was, they rented that.
I was gonna say, did they even stay?
Yeah, they did, they, that turned out to be really a boon for Litchfield, because that was a depot for almost a hundred mile radius. So they were taking stuff, cleared down on Marlberry Grove from here, and, you know, they...
See, I worked on that project a little bit.
When they left there, that was spick and span, there was nothing left there that was...
I like this pipeline right now that Gary's fighting every week.
No, that's a mess, and that, that Dakota has turned out to be, we were, we were getting along real well while they were here, they just had talked to our bonding company for any culverts that are smashed or ditches that are full.
That's why it's gonna be the township, with the same hundreds of people that came through, you just go talk, just go talk to the wall, they're not gonna do nothing about it. They said that you're gonna do, ultimately, they're not gonna do anything.
They'll tell you that while they're putting it in.
Yeah.
So what we have learned, and we can learn this as a county, or as a city too, if we ever need it, you take that money instead of getting a bond...
You don't pay it all.
You give me the money, we'll hold it, and then when it's all over with and we're all happy with it, we'll give it, give it to you, give it back.
You know, if you go through an engineering firm, those people only get twenty percent.
We're doing that, we had, we, we had to do that just for houses to burn down and went though, I mean, I signed off on that, like that house that burned down over here, I, the insurance sent, it's a thing that you put lean against until they get it cleaned up, and then they don't, they don't, they don't, and we have to sign off on, same, same thing with this one over here, that's over here beside me, yeah.
Which one's beside you? Charlie's?
Waters.
Waters.
Yeah, what's Charlie's gonna have?
That's a whole nother story, because ain't no claim, fire, nobody turned in an insurance claim on that, so it can sit there for twenty years.
What caught on fire about you?
Waters.
You know, it was a old house.
The ones where the windows are out of it?
Yeah.
That was on fire?
Oh, yeah.
Greg was on the roof of it when it was on fire.
Well, I noticed the windows were out of it.
We had, what do you call him, chief, chief, uh...
Oh, I know which one it is.
Bottle washer, the Montgomery County Sheriff was here in town.
Greg?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
But yeah, so that, I mean, we just, I just signed off on the paper on that one.
Charlie Shelton's place.
Because they're gonna tear that house down.
Is there any, is there any insurance on that one?
There is none, nobody's turning in an insurance claim on that, and so...
Try to get the fire department to...
Well, it's private property, so the problem is, is that Scott was gonna try to get us back in touch, because he, with his family, and get permission to do it.
I wonder if somebody could do a search and see if there was Charlie or her had insurance to her...
Yeah, probably somebody should, does.
Well, how do you do that?
Well, the guy who, the guy who owned the property, he bought that for Charlie to live, until Charlie died.
Well, that was, that was...
Because if somebody, if let's say Ziggy had insurance on it...
Well, it's in his name.
Yeah, that guy's name, I don't know.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's in Charlie's name, the property.
That guy's name showed up somewhere, because I looked it up.
That was, what was that guy's name?
I don't know, but it showed up somewhere.
Well, I can look it up.
Well, I looked it up on Beacon, but my...
Scott was gonna try to get in touch with that niece again and try to see...
I can buy it just to clean it up.
Well, and that's what I said, you know, and I, I would assume that they would probably just sign it over to somebody, just, because the lady's like, "We don't want this."
Give me the information.
I will, because, because then they'll probably, you know, she's, I would, because they don't want the property, and they were gonna come down and clean it up, and that never happened. So I would assume that, you know...
The fire department, if we can get permission, we probably won't.
Finish, finish, and then you'd still have some minor cleanup, because there's bricks and stuff and that, but...
That's fine, but that's, that would be doable.
But if we could get it, I know, because Arlene is approaching about that too, and I would, and I'm with Arlene on this, I would not wanna have to look at my front door every day, every day, knowing that you...